January 6, 2023 to order. For the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fry?
Here.
Mr. Hanson?
Here.
Mr. Hanem?
Here.
Mr. McCann?
Here.
Mr. Richardson?
Here.
Mrs. Stout?
Here.
This is Westphal.
All seven members of City Council are present, therefore a quorum does exist. Thank you all for attending. Welcome to Chief Graham out there. Nice to see you here, Chief. And I have Dr. Monk, who's going to talk to us in just a few minutes. With that, I invite you all to join our Pledge of Allegiance, this meeting led by Mr. Richardson.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, for God, for visible, liberty, and justice for all.
additions to the agenda. I have no items to add this evening. Mr. Fry?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Members of City Council?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to schedule an Employee and Community Relations Committee meeting.
Let's make that 18A.
Thank you.
Schedule Employees and Community Relations Committee. Any additional items from members of City Council? Hearing non-Mister Sanford, Keith Miller, Mister Schroyer, Mister Aller, or Mrs. Brining. With that, it's our motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Seconded.
And moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and our agenda for this evening's meeting is approved. Onto Agenda Item 4, which is approval of our meeting minutes from January 17th. Mr. Fry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move approval of the meeting minutes from the council meeting of January 17th, 2023, as submitted.
Seconded.
And moved and seconded to approve those meeting minutes that submitted from January 17th. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and those meeting minutes are approved. With that, we come to a happy part of the meeting. We are very pleased to welcome Mr. John.
Thirty-year volunteer on our Civil Service Commission. Hi. Probably.
We'll turn around this way. When was the last time you were in this room? Probably something to do with her, right?
Probably was. She did that a couple times.
And I'd like to point out, this proclamation has five whereases. And I like to tell people that means they're very important. I have a lot to say about you.
How many whereases did Sandy get?
I don't remember. Probably four. It's not a competition.
Hold on.
This is a proclamation of the Office of the Mayor, whereas John R. Hussman was first appointed to the Sylvania Civil Service Commission on January 14th, 1993. And whereas John completed his 30th year of service on the commission at the expiration of his fifth term on December 31st, 2022, and chose not to be reappointed to a sixth term. And whereas a member of the Civil Service Commission, Mr. Hussman was instrumental in implementing the police cadet program, permitting online testing and reviewing and approving updates to the civil service rules and regulations. And whereas Mr. Hussman has selflessly donated his time and expertise, and has provided outstanding contributions to the city of Sylvania through his service on the City Service Commission. And whereas, together with his wife, former City Council member Sandy Hussman, has provided great service to many worthy community organizations and causes over the years. Now, therefore, I, Craig A. Stahl, Mayor, do hereby proclaim today, Monday, February 6, 2023, as John R. Hussman Day in the city of Sylvania.
Thank you very much, Craig, and thank you all. You did point out a couple of accomplishments that happened during my tenure, but I didn't do it alone. There's always two other commissioners, and we did make a lot of progress, as I said. The testing, the online testing, has been such an improvement and really changed the scope of the work. Formerly, that testing was just a huge chore.
You were proctors in the room when those tests were being given.
We were, and we had to have police protection to do it. And we did. We did. So that's gone much better. The secretaries that we've had have been very helpful as well. But I must say that the last few years, the internet service and the testing, Laura, you've really brought that to light, and really make it run like a clock. And I don't know how this happened, but the law director, Leslie Biding, has become part of the group, not only at our beck and call, but regularly attends meetings and has been part of it. So these ladies have been a big part of our recent success. Thank you very much.
Thank you for all your years of service, John.
Without people like you in the community, we would not put it this way. Only the fair wear at your height. We did not put on there, John is the founder, first president of the Sylvania Great Flags Club, Frog, Hensies Baseball.
Come on, just fall back.
Sandy asked me yesterday if she should stay for the rest of the meeting, and I said, wasn't necessary. I wasn't planning on staying, so. I didn't know they took reservations.
They do if you're Sandy Hussman.
It's John Hussman Day. He gets a reservation when he wants.
Great save you, too.
We are privileged this evening, also tonight, to have Dr. Richard Monk here to talk to us with an update and report on the Toledo-Lucas County Health Department. He's our representative on the Board of Governors for the Health Department and asked to come in and give us an update. Dr. Monk, thank you for being here.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, council, I appreciate the opportunity to talk with you. Soon after I was appointed and nominated and elected, et cetera. He got to, okay. It was a little over two years ago, just before the onset of the five-letter word COVID. And so I really have not had a chance to get back, to report back to you. And so I won't take very much of your time. I did leave a little pamphlet, an updated pamphlet, about where the Health Department is at this point. Really, for the last two years, we have been somewhat hamstrung because of COVID. So a lot of the clinics had to be pared back and such. But I want you to know that we are really very much up and running at this point, and everybody's going in all sorts of different directions. And I think it's important to realize that the Health Department is a little bit more, in fact, it's an awful lot more than collecting data like birth and death certificates and looking at the food establishments. I also want you to know that the governing board of the Toledo-Lucas County Health Department is indeed a governing board, and we intend to govern. We intend to be very active, and we are active in the direction of the Health Department. I also want you to know that the Toledo-Lucas County Health Department is considered a, really a standard bearer for the state for a number of programs. The Northwest Ohio Safe Surange Program, NOS, several of the other health departments are trying to mirror that. Also, the naloxone distribution program that we have, we've got a van that goes around various different locations where there are problems. And that is also a program that is being mirrored by several of the other health departments. So we're doing well as far as the Health Department goes in Northwest Ohio. Unfortunately, our health in Northwest Ohio is not the greatest in the world. I think it's important to realize at this point, as of 2021, what, in your mind, is the largest cause of death in youth from age 1 to 19? What's the largest cause of death? Okay? That would be a logical assumption, but it's not true. Again, anybody else? What is the largest cause of death for kids from 1 to 19? Used to be automobile accidents. What is it now?
Mental health.
Suicide.
Probably, but all told, it's gun violence. In the last year, 4,300, let me get my numbers straight, 4,357 kids from the ages of 1 to 19 were killed because of gun violence. Either because of suicide or gun violence itself. So that's more than deaths by automobile accident. It used to be the number one. In Canada, 45. In all of Europe, all of Europe, less than 150. Compared to 4,300-plus in the United States. Probably also realize that up until, from 1996 until 2018, the CDC was not allowed to investigate gun violence or firearms as a health problem. And in 2018, a bill was passed, but it was not funded. It was not funded until 2020. So now, the CDC is able to collect data and try to evaluate what's going on. And that's where this 4,300 count comes from. Last year in this country, 43,780 people were killed by gun violence in this country. Okay? Compared with about 500 in Canada and barely 1,000 in all of Europe. So gun violence is a big, big problem. And we at the Health Department are trying to address this. I was a pediatric orthopedist in my professional life, so I am interested in what's happening with our kids. So I was very pleased that the Health Department got a childhood health and wellness symposium that we held at Lurie College in October. And now we're getting quarterly follow-ups of a lot of networking and a lot of brainstorming, and I think some good programs are going to come out of that. So I just want you to know that we are alive and well at the Health Department, and I want to leave a little bit of time for people to ask me any questions or if you have any concerns that you want me to bring back to the Health Department. But we are, we are in the process of starting to look for a deputy health commissioner. We haven't had a deputy health commissioner now for over three years. And our current health commissioner is talking about stepping down in four to five years or so. So succession planning is going to be important. And it's not going to be easy to find a good health commissioner. But we on the board of the Lucas County Health Department feel very strongly that we want to have a strong health commissioner with a good deputy health commissioner to lead the way. So any questions? I just want everybody to know that I personally think it's been a privilege and honor to serve the city of Sylvania. I thought it was going to be sort of a walk in the park. It's anything but a walk in the park.
Was difficult timing when you picked up the job, and you are going at it with a great deal of energy, which we appreciate.
Well, I appreciate the thoughts you've had to put me in this position, and I hope to do you proud. But any questions that I can answer?
Dr. Monk, I have a quick question.
Please.
But first, a comment. Thank you for your service. I know that this is one of those asks you take on, and you're saying, "I didn't know what I was getting myself into," in terms of time commitment. Many times, you're likely driving to meetings, saying, "How did I get in this position?" But we thank you for your service. I think representative for the Sylvania City at the Board of the Health Department is critically important. So can you tell me a little bit about how the board is structured, how many people serve on it, and are there representatives from all of the Lucas County communities?
They're pretty much, there are 12 members of the board. One from, four from Lucas County, four from Toledo, Mami, Sylvania, Butterville, and then Township. But everybody seems to be well represented. The District Advisory Council, which is sort of runs the, part of the funding of the Health Department, appoints four of those members.
How frequently do you meet? Monthly?
We have a board meeting monthly. We have city meetings at least monthly and sometimes two or three times a month. Thank you. That's, you know, for a Cayman. Thank you.
Very good. Well, thank you. That's helpful information at your service.
Thank you. It's really been a privilege and an honor to be down there. And I made it clear to Mayor Stahl, when he pointed me, that I would do this if it's a working board. I was not going to do it if it's a rubber-stamped board and indeed is a working board. As I say, it's a privilege and an honor.
Dr. Monk, let me echo Mary's thanks for your good work. Looking at the flyer, and interestingly enough, you know, funny little thing on the back about vital record. And I'm not here to, well, I guess I am to preach, because that's what I do. But recently come to my attention that 24% of minority Ohio voter-age individuals not have government-issued IDs, which are now pretty much required to vote in the state of Ohio. And I'm working on a program to get people to get those government IDs. You guys, you guys are the key to this, because you birth certificates.
I think that is a very interesting point. I'm not sure that it's going to fall under the purvey of the Health Department, but certainly the logistics you ought to be able to work on, absolutely.
I think you guys issue birth certificates, right?
We don't. We record the birth certificate.
Okay, so if somebody needs a birth certificate, they don't go to the Department of Health? I thought they did.
They, I could be mistaken, but usually.
Well, if you would look into this.
I shall.
Make a point of this for me, and I think there's a community outreach issue here that, because this is just recently become a significant issue because of changes in the, in the state, initiated by our state legislature and our Ohio Vice Code that require people to have IDs to vote, and.
Government-issued IDs.
Right. And so, and I thought, my daughter's a social worker, and I thought she said she had taken people to the Department of Health to get birth certificates.
At least, to the best of my knowledge, and that may be a little bit short, is that wherever the child is delivered, they initiate the birth certificate.
I understand that.
If it's a home delivery, then whoever's responsible for the home delivery initiates the birth certificate. It is recorded at the Health Department and sent to the state.
And do you have access to other health department? I don't know the answer to these questions, and actually, I didn't prepare for this. I apologize. I don't know the facts, but if that's something you could look into, I think it is, it's a vitally critic, it's a critically vital piece of our democracy that everybody can vote. And there is currently, currently a great disparity between minority and non-minority voters in terms of government ID. And I think that's the extent that you can help with that. That would be great.
Got it down here, and I will certainly follow up on that and give you a report back.
Thank you.
The other thing that I think is important to look at, if you look at a map of Lucas County, if you, and on that map are little dots for every person that died because of gun violence. Look at a map, if you look on that map for a dot, every person that died of COVID. Look at the map of every person that was eligible to vote, did not vote. Those maps are almost exactly superimposing. It's the consumer cellular, this is ours, our map, and this is Verizon's map, and they're exactly the same. Well, those maps, exactly the same in Lucas County, exactly the same in Chicago. So gun deaths, deaths of COVID, lack of voting are just absolutely superimposing. But I think that at least, that may be partially right, but I certainly, I know that the Health Departments certainly can communicate back and forth and share information pretty freely. There's personal health information, no, but things like birth, but you do, if you need a copy of a birth certificate, go to Health.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Mayor, I appreciate it. Have any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Monk.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
All right, let's proceed with Agenda Item 7. We're going to have a Zoom visitor here from American Fireworks Manufacturing. Sabrina Nichols is going to join us. Let's try to bring her up. All right, can you hear me, Sabrina?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, you have a camera you can turn on?
If I need to keep the phone near my mouth so you can hear me, you don't really want me to turn on my camera.
All right, I'll accept that. We are here contemplating authorizing an agreement with your company for fireworks for our next two July 3 fireworks displays. And you are here to answer questions. City Council has a copy of your proposed agreement form. Leslie or Mister Fry, would you like to speak about it?
Sure. As we all know, we had some challenges last year that our fireworks display was postponed for a few days. And in that regard, we started looking around for another vendor. Sage Yard, Mike McMahon went out and put an RFP on the street and received a couple of bids back. One from American Fireworks and another from another vendor, potential vendor. We evaluated the responses myself. Mister Sanford and Mister Turner from this township evaluated the alternatives, and we came forward with this thought process that this was the right vendor with the right dollar figure, although it's substantially higher than what we'd seen in past years. So at that point, Mrs. Brining got involved and started looking at the contract language. I'll let her make any comments she'd like to make about that.
Thank you, Mister Fry. As we're all aware, the issues that I was most concerned with in looking at the contract and making sure that where the, American Fireworks had the staffing to put on the show when we agreed for them to, which is July 3, provided there's some other conditions that we request a delay whether or otherwise. And so I think Mister Fry, myself, and Mister Sanford, all looked at the agreement, got the comments back. And then we had a Zoom with both Sabrina and the President of American Fireworks. And they were very responsive and receptive to most of our comments. They've agreed to provide the names of the team that will be here working. They honor before June 15th, so that will get, so they will have, we will know in plenty of time if there's an issue with any of the certification and the team that will be here. That, once they agreed to that, they have done the Mommy Perrysburg fireworks show. And they were happy to come and answer questions. I thought it would be helpful for council to have the opportunity to get reassurance because of the issues that we had last year. So if anybody has any questions for me or Sabrina?
I have a question.
Sure.
This is Westphal.
I don't know whether this is for Sabrina or for Leslie or Mark, but I see down here that clients shall be responsible for all permit fees and fire watch fees necessary to conduct the fireworks display. Are those fees already included in the price that we have here? The pricing says that it is for the fireworks display, but it doesn't really make it clear to me, anyway, if the permit fees and. to me anyway if the permit fees and fire watch fees are included.
The permit fees are not included in the budget.
Okay, and can you give me an idea of what those fees might be or a range or something?
I'm going to put two Graham on the spot here. But what the fire watch is, is you supply firefighters.
But that's always been the case, right Chief?
Yes, that's always, and that's never been included.
And then does the fire department also issue the permit fees? Okay. Of course. I just wonder if we get those, the permit fees through the fire department. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Sabrina, I cut you off. Did you have something to contribute to that discussion?
No, actually I was going to say I would need to talk to the fire chief.
We just happened to have him in the room tonight. Chief, do you have any questions about the proposed fireworks or comments?
I have one more quick question. Again, I think this is more to city administration. Are the fees broken down evenly among all of the participants?
Honestly, Mrs. Westfall, I don't, the fees have never been a part of any fireworks agreement that we've entered into previously. Those always have been handled outside of the contract and I honestly don't know how those have been paid.
I believe Sage Yard is the one that gets the permit and pays the fees.
I said it that. I'll let you know.
Mr. Sanford.
I just wanted to add that. Pause. Our.
Good, thank you.
The city is the agreement signer and gets reimbursed by the other entities. Mr. Frye, I think you were working to achieve an equal fireworks display to what we had under contract before.
That was the, that was the, we looked at it both ways. We asked for a $35,000 display, which is what we had in the last few years, and then a $45,000 display. The 45 got us to a virtual equivalent of what we've seen in the last couple of few years. But the 35 was markedly less and I think was sufficiently materially deficient in regards to the, I think the public would have noticed. They would have seen the difference. It was, because this was not linear. It wasn't like, okay, the extra 10 grand got us, you know, 20%, 15 or 20% more. It was more than that on a percentage basis.
Same manpower involved probably.
Correct. Mobilization costs.
Sabrina, I'm going to put you on the spot. How does this compare to the Perrysburg Mommy Show?
Well, you guys are rated in the same budget range and they can shoot a little bit bigger shells than you, but other than that, you guys are going to have very similar displays and they love it and I'm very confident that you guys will too.
That's two communities doing it, I'm not surprised. Every time I visit with the mayors from those communities, which I'm doing this Thursday, the mayor of Mommy reminds me that Perrysburg has cannons aimed at, across the river at Mommy. I don't know if they're part of your fireworks display, but they are definitely there.
Nope, not, they're not, but that's a good idea.
Well, I can't, I can't say one thing about that, Mr. Mayor. Some years ago, we as a group collectively decided, when I first started working on fireworks some years ago, we were using some 8 and 10 inch shells. And those shells require special packaging and the like, which were much more, much more expensive. So we made a collective decision, actually increase the number of shells. And the reason we can do that is because the height that we need to achieve or the radius of the people that are participating and viewing the display allowed the six inch shells to be more than sufficient. The height is the driver of how large those shells are. So if you'd see a display like in New York City, those are much, much larger shells. You could, I think at the time, we were getting three six inch shells for one eight inch shell. So it was a material increase in the amount of, of display that we could get. The height really wasn't an issue at the time, that's why we went that direction.
All right. Mr. Mayor, this may be more for Ms. Bryning, but the ordinance talks about the city, the township, Sage Yard, all of that makes sense, but it also mentions Coca-Cola Corporation?
Yeah, that, they've been a long time sponsor from what I understand. I don't, Mrs. Westfall may be able to answer if they still are, but I haven't heard to the contrary, so I always include them.
I think, I think there's pouring rights that Sage Yard basically designates from Coca-Cola in this case towards the offsetting the cost of the display.
Yeah.
I think they're called pouring rights, aren't they?
I have to confirm all that with Sage Yard. I'll let you know when I find out.
My recollection from conversations with Mike McMahon, but I think they're called pouring rights.
That's my recollection.
All right, we do have ordinance 10, 2023 to authorize this agreement. There's no further questions. We'll go to Mr. Frye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce ordinance number 10, 2023 and read by title only. Authorizing an agreement with American Fireworks Manufacturing Company for the Independence Day celebrations on July 3, 2023 and July 3, 2024 at Centennial Terrace Inquiry. Authorizing the mayor and director of finance to sign an agreement for the fireworks display, which will cost $45,000 per year. Authorizing a 50% deposit in each year's fireworks display due March 1 of each calendar year, which will be shared by the city, Sylvania Township, Coca-Cola Corporation, the Sylvania Area Joint Recreation District and area businesses. I move passage of ordinance number 10, 2023 as an emergency measure.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number 10, 2023 as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries and ordinance 10, 2023 is enacted as an emergency measure. Sabrina, thank you for your time this evening. We look forward to a wonderful fireworks display on July 3.
Thank you so much. I hope that you all have a very good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now ask Mr. Aller to come to the podium for his regular work. We have so many capital improvements underway. Agenda item 8 is for the Monroe Street and Arun Road Safety Improvement Project. Hire a contract for engineering support during construction. Mr. Aller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This project, DGL Engineers was the consulting engineer for the project. The project went to bid, ready to move on to construction, although construction will not start up until approximately mid-May this year. And, but during that construction, questions do come up from time to time between contractor or our engineering firm that'll be doing the inspection on just exactly what the, and did some shop drawing reviews and things of that nature. DGL provided a proposal in the amount of $10,000 to provide those services so that they'll be available during construction if needed. And we would ask, those costs were included in the cost of the project and in the capital improvement fund. And we would ask that the proposal be approved with DGL for $10,000.
Questions for Mr. Aller? We do have ordinance number 11, 2023 to accept this proposal in the amount of $10,000. Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce by title only ordinance number 11, 2023, accepting the proposal of DGL Consulting Engineers LLC to provide engineering support during construction of the Monroe and Arun intersection improvement projects, appropriating funds therefore in the amount of $10,000. I would move passage as an emergency measure.
Second. Been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number 11, 2023 as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries and ordinance 11, 2023 is enacted as an emergency measure. Moving to Agenda Item 9, a similar contract for the Monroe and Silicon Improvement Project. Mr. Aller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This project is for, in December this year, council authorized us to request letters of interest from consultants to provide construction management service, services, CE&amp;I Construction Engineering and Inspection Services. We had only received one LOI from American Structure Point. They also did the CE&amp;I services on Maplewood Drive and will be doing the CE&amp;I services for Arun and Pro. Good firm, they have several past ODOT employees that work for them and are very familiar with the ODOT process and do a very good job for us. Their proposal was in the amount of $498,080 and those funds were budgeted and included in the CIP and we asked for approval of that proposal.
All right, I'd like to point out to city council that the amount in the ordinance, ordinance 12, 2023 is in here. It says $79,000 in the ordinance. And you're confident of that larger number? I like the smaller number myself.
Toby wanted me to put in the smaller.
I would like the smaller number, but I, a $6 million project, I don't think would get done for $79,000 in inspection services.
Well, that needs to be corrected. I see in four places on the first page of the ordinance. Nice try Toby. That is a correction to the ordinance. Would you like a motion to make that change?
Yes, please.
All right, Mr. Richardson, first we need a motion to amend it.
I would make a mo, I would move to amend ordinance 12, 2023 to replace all mentions of $79,194 with the correct amount of.
Four.
$498,080.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to amend proposed ordinance 12, 2023, correcting $79,194 for the contract amount to $498,080. All in favor of that indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Now, any further questions for Mr. Aller? We do have proposed ordinance 12, 2023. Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to introduce by title only ordinance number 12, 2023, accepting the proposal of American Structure Point Inc. to provide construction, engineering and inspection services for the Maplewood Avenue Reconstruction Project, appropriating funds therefore in an amount not to exceed $498,080 and a new passage.
Second. An order that, that Maplewood Avenue Reconstruction Project is also incorrect.
It'd be silica.
My goodness.
That's okay. I'll make, the money is the most important. Yeah. If you could just reread the title, reintroduce it with the correct check.
Yes.
Yeah, we already made the motion to amend the dollar amount, so that's, that'll be fine.
Let's reread it with the right name on it.
All right, I will now reintroduce ordinance 12, 2023 by title only, accepting the proposal of American Structure Point Inc. to provide construction and engineering inspection services for the Silicon Drive Bridge replacement.
Bro Street.
Yes.
Silicon improvement.
Yes, and the Monroe, okay. Sorry about that. The Monroe and Sil, Monroe and Silicon Improvement Projects as well. And I would appropriating funds therefore in an amount not to exceed $498,080 and new passage.
Second. All right, it's been moved and seconded for passage of amended ordinance number 12, 2023 as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries and ordinance 12, 2023 is enacted as an emergency measure. This sounds like a, a word processing problem. It printed out an older one.
I'm not sure, so we'll.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 10, Service Director proposing a change to amend our speed hump policy. Mr. Aller.
Mayor, during the process of the speed hump request that was on Fishman Drive, these, the word changes that were discovered, and then we currently have a petition out for signatures of a portion of the city. But one of the things that we've noticed, that I noticed was that policy in the present part of owners, who had the ability to sign. And no, an effort to clean that up, I'm proposing that we put that to property owners, their long-term. Place, property. Come on, Nick. That is the, that is the primary change that's being made in the language. There are a couple cleanup issues on language and that nature, really changed. And then at the end, previous policy indicated some more specific items. If those things were to change, according to file, file manual devices, then we would have to come back to council. Really, it's a code. And just change that language so that it would, as approved by the Director of Service, be signed at the humps and then approved by the Director of Public.
Mr. Aller, can I ask you a quick question on this design, design and signing section? Once those are established by, I don't know who you said they would be established by, but whoever establishes the size of, are they standard? I mean, we're not going to get into petty conversations from people saying they don't want it this high, they think that's too big of a, all that stuff. There's a standard like we, and refer them to whatever the group has you suggested in.
O M U T C.
Okay.
File manual, manual of uniform traffic.
Okay, and we've got, I, okay, that's great, thank you.
Mr. Aller, a couple of questions. One's a clarification. I think I understand what you, what's there with the 85th percentile, but just to get it on the record, could you walk us through that briefly, please?
The 85th percentile is the speed at which 85% of traffic travels at or be. So if during the course of a study, 85th percentile speed determine 30 miles an hour, that means 85% of the traffic on that street travels at code. 85% of the traffic on that street travels at code, if, traffic travel at 30. Not an average 50/50 or faster hits, urgent, at or be.
Streets where asked to put these on are usually 25 miles, residential street.
Yes, that's a requirement. Residential streets, 25.
So the, the 85th percentile, is that a general standard in that, whatever that document or document that you were talking about a few minutes ago with Mrs. Westfall?
That can be, that can be different. At some places, I've seen, I, I've seen everything between 75 and, I, I've never seen anything, it can be any number on it. I don't know that I've ever seen it before. Um, if I, if we're in company with other, that's 75 to 85.
Okay. This is, question is just as far as standard procedure for, this doesn't happen every day for us, right? I mean, we don't, we don't have requests, you know, every, every couple of months for speed humps, but based your recollection, talks about the return of the postcard verification. No timing really listed there, which I'm fine with. Is there a standard? Is it 30 days or 60 days that we kind of wait, see what the sense of the people on that street are?
Don't recall for Friday, cards, establish a date on the cards that.
Happened to look at, as a, a new request, bearings, and say, please return in two weeks.
All right, so it does have a two week, uh, let me, that's not in policy. That's just one.
And I'm, and I'm fine with the two weeks. I would just request, given the inconsistency of the mail delivery, that we might give a little more latitude on the two-week timeframe, because it could have been put in the, it could have been put in the mailbox, you know, the day after and it might not show up until, you know, next July or something, so.
Yeah, we don't, that, that's one of the things that, you know, we don't want to be, right. Typically, um, you're at 20% of.
So, okay.
But, yeah, I.
And I'm obviously fine with not putting a specific timeframe in, but I was just curious what the standard protocol was.
And I believe Sharon went off of postmark date? Came in after she would just look at the post, after the two weeks, she went off of that date.
All right, we do have ordinance number 13-2023 to enact this amendment of the criteria for speed humps. Mr. Fry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce ordinance number 13-2023 and read by title only. Amending the criteria for installation of speed hump traffic controls in the city streets as initially approved by ordinance number 63-92 and amended by ordinance numbers 82-93, 68-98, and 66-2005, established the procedure for replacing speed humps that have been removed as part of a street improvement project. I move passage of ordinance number 13-2023 as an emergency measure.
Second. Been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number 13-2023 as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries and ordinance 13-2023 is enacted as an emergency measure. All right, on to page two of our agenda. We're up to agenda item 11. We have some vehicles and vehicle equipment to purchase. We'll start with the service director's report. Mr. Aller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the first vehicle that we're proposing is a vehicle for Parks Division. We have received a proposal from White Chevrolet for a 2020 Chevrolet Silverado 500 Heavy Duty. That proposes an amount of $7,613. This vehicle, once we have it out, will then be coming back, uh, dispose of a 1004 F650. Um, want me to address the head package now, Mayor?
All right. Okay, we, they are not in the same order in your council packets. We need to get to ordinance 16. 11D, why don't we take them, not, not in this order? If everybody's comfortable with that, we'll jump to 11D. Okay, this is proposed ordinance 16-2023. Mr. Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to introduce by title only ordinance number 16-2023, authorizing the mayor and director of finance to accept the proposal of Dave White Chevrolet for the provision of a new 2023 Chevrolet Silverado 5500 HD pickup truck for the Division of Parks, Department of Public Service, appropriating $57,613 therefore, and move for passage as an emergency measure.
Been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number 16-2023 as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries and ordinance 16-2023 is enacted as an emergency measure. Okay, Mr. Aller, back to your report. We're now to collide a truck and equipment.
Body and snow package for that vehicle that we approved. We received a proposal from collide a truck equipment out that truck with the equipment necessary, quote that $1,500. Ask for.
Mr. Aller, um, we've had, um, mixed results from timing of vehicles due to shortages and the like. Did Calida give you a sense of what the delivery turnaround is on this equipment, once we've entered into a contract? Presumably we do.
The, I'm not sure on the collide a truck equipment. I know that White Chevrolet likely.
Okay, and collide it really isn't quite as material in that, fair enough.
Um, it, it is, uh, it, it, it's, it's hard to ever guess. That vehicle we, eight, but the next vehicle, uh, which is already.
I was just kind of curious, because I know that we had some challenges getting some of these cars, delivery time on to some of the cars, and that's been a challenge for us, so, thank you.
And Mr. Aller, your, your report says this is replacing a 2003 Ford Walden Dark. All right. Only 20 years old.
So wear and tear on vehicles over.
This is ordinance 15-2023. It's agenda item 11C. Um, we're going to go back to Mr. Hanson for this one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce by title only ordinance number 15-2023, authorizing the mayor and director of finance to accept the proposal of Collida Truck Equipment, Inc. for the provision of one new dump truck body and snow package for the Division of Parks, Department of Public Service, appropriating $68,500 therefore, and move for passage of ordinance number 15-2023 and it's as an emergency measure.
Second. Been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number 15-2023 as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries and ordinance 15-2023 is enacted as an emergency measure. Okay, now we're going to cover 11B and 11E. These are for the same vehicle, I believe. Is that correct? It's your next one for the streets division. It's the truck and the equipment.
Kenworth.
Lighter.
E.
E and E.
E and D.
E.
B and E, correct.
This vehicle is in the streets division, um, large, uh, standard, single axle dump truck. Um, it is a Ford, uh, don't get in, how, uh, we're getting mixed now, Kenworth E480, cabin chassis. Um, same thing here. Once that vehicle does come in, we'll come and propose of an existing dump truck that we have, and that is a 2007, look for permission purchase of the, about 100.
All right, let's do that one. We are at truck itself. It'll be 11B, ordinance 14-2023. Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to introduce by title only ordinance number 14-2023, authorizing the mayor and director of finance to accept the proposal of White for Kenworth for the provision of a new 2024 Kenworth E480 cabin chassis in the division of streets, Department of Public Service appropriating $118,432 therefore, and I would move passage as an emergency measure.
Second. Been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number 14-2023 as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries and ordinance 14-2023 is enacted as an emergency measure. Now, on to the equipment for that truck. For Aller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, we received a proposal from Collida Trucking Equipment, again, for the equipment, dump box, uh, snow plow and salt spreader for the Kenworth vehicle. Uh, that quote was in the amount of $104,100 and we ask for permission. I don't believe I stated that all of these purchases are free. Call budget.
All right, thank you. We do have for this one, it is agenda item 11E, proposed ordinance 17-2023. Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to introduce ordinance number 17-2023 by title only, authorizing the mayor and director of finance to accept the proposal of Collida Truck Equipment, Inc. for the provision of one new dump truck box, plow, and salt spreader for the streets, Department of Public Service, appropriating $124,300 therefore, and I would move passage as an emergency measure.
Second. Moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number 17-2023 as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries and ordinance 17-2023 is enacted as an emergency measure. Thank you, Mr. Aller. All right, we do have his agenda item 12, approval to put a city vehicle onto gov deals. Asked the chief to tell us about this. She's, I have taken a look at it. It is a vehicle that's ready to retire. dispose of it for scrap value. Oh, okay. There's some repair work to be done on it. You don't see the road going by under your feet. All right, um, Mr. Fry, we need a motion to approve putting it on gov deal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion to, uh, put the 2007 Jeep Commander with the VIN number, uh, from the memo from, from Mr. Aller, dated 1/27/2023 on gov deals for bidding purposes.
Second. Been moved and seconded to put this 2007 Jeep Commander on gov deals or sale. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Chief. Now on to agenda item 13. As you're all aware, with the centralization of police and fire dispatching, the police dispatchers that we had are no longer dispatching over here. The dispatching equipment has been removed and we have hired some of them back as clerks. And we did not have a contract amount, or they, they asked for a contract. We've been paying them for a year, but they asked for an official contract, which we have been negotiating for the last few months. I know that Mr. Aller has been a part of those negotiations, but I also look to Mr. Schreier, who's the keeper of these labor agreements, for your comments on this.
Yeah, thank you.
This is a comparable amount that the city's been paying them without a contract and I believe is less than they were being paid as police dispatcher. All right, any questions for Mr. Schreier, Mr. Aller, or Mrs. Brining? If not, we do have proposed ordinance 18-2023 to authorize this two-year collective bargaining agreement. Mrs. Westfall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce ordinance number 18-2023 and read by title only, authorizing the mayor and director of finance on behalf of the City of Sylvania to enter into a two-year collective bargaining agreement commencing January 1, 2023, with the Fraternal Order of Police, Ohio Labor Council. On behalf of the Sylvania Police Clerks, I move final passage of ordinance number 18-2023 as an emergency measure.
Second. Been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number 18-2023 as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries and ordinance 18-2023 is enacted as an emergency measure. Thank you. On to agenda item 14, which is proposed ordinance 19-2023 to enter an agreement with a new police officer, Connor Sidler, to reimburse him for the cost of his academy attendance, I believe?
That's correct. He will agree, he will pay us back if he leaves within three years. That's what the agreement says. Because he paid for the academy himself, but he did earn a wage when he was attending the academy. And that's what the, um, $18,000 is. So it's on a declining scale for the, for years. This is similar to the other agreements that we have with the, um, the employees who took advantage of the receiving Neil Pata training and certification when, after they were hired.
Part of the police cadet program that we spoke about earlier with Mr. Housman. Chief, any comments on this? Chief, any comments on this?
He's not gonna die soon, if at all. Um, he will be
He has passed his exam, is that correct? He has passed his police officer's exam. Very good. Thank you. We do have proposed ordinance nineteen, two thousand and twenty-three to enter into this agreement, Mr. Frye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce ordinance number nineteen, two thousand and twenty-three and read by title only, authorizing the mayor and director of finance to enter into an agreement with Connor Sitlak. I move passage of ordinance number nineteen, two thousand and twenty-three as an emergency measure.
Second.
We moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number nineteen, two thousand and twenty-three as an emergency measure, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and ordinance nineteen, two thousand and twenty-three is enacted as an emergency measure.
Next is agenda item fifteen, and you'll note the four-year-old or sort of three-and-a-half-year-old uh, proposed ordinance number on this, um, this has been tabled for some time and we got into COVID and we did not come back to with it, but with inquiries from both Mrs. Westfall and Mr. Frye about the large numbers that we saw on the uncollected tax rate, tax report, um, this is back on the table. Mr. Schreier. This work that we used to hire an attorney or a collection agency to do it? And your intent is not to go from top to bottom of the list, you're gonna start at the top of the list with the largest outstanding amount. These mostly individuals or businesses? Do we have, um, we obviously have requirement to file. Um, are we pursuing that? I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a crime to not file your city income tax.
We did have the tax, um, person come and share with us some time ago that they do call and do some follow-up with, I believe.
The enforcement attorney or the prosecutor?
You don't expect the state of Ohio to want you to do that either?
To do what?
State of Ohio is not gonna ask us to file charges against them either, they're gonna go after the tax money.
Do you have a breakdown of? I mean, is this twenty of our neighbors or two thousand? So, fifty-seven represent about half of the dollar. The cutoff is a hundred dollars? How much are the fees to somebody who owes two hundred and fifty dollars?
Our fees are?
The state's fee. Right. So could we, um, suppose we could? Um, I've seen there's, these where the fees for the collection exceed the fees that are act, cost of act, being collected when they have to refer these out. Um, thought about establishing a floor above which, below which we would not pursue, I think a hundred dollars, um, is pretty low. Really sue our neighbors for a hundred and fifty dollars? Or not suing them, or not filing charges? I don't believe so. That's what I just asked Mr. Schreier, and he says not. They don't, they don't, they don't file lawsuit. They just file lien. Right? Okay, don't get me wrong, I don't have any problems, people always, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars. Um, who don't pay their taxes are generally, uh, there, there's a reason they don't pay their tax, they don't have any money. I really wonder whether that hundred-dollar cutoff is where we ought to be.
Do we even have a choice in that, I mean, that sounds, okay. Will they go for any of the back taxes, I mean, how far back do they go, or is it just for one year? Okay. Do we have any idea what percent of collections are kind of normal? Yeah, like, do they have a range that they would expect to be able to collect? And you said like Bowling Green, and I don't remember who are, have, are not using this. Did they make a choice not to use it, or it just hasn't come up first?
So, so, make sure I understand, follow up, Mr. Schreier. So let's just say that there's three thousand taxpayers in this group. Um, we can refer to the Attorney General, any of those three thousand that we want, but the Attorney General has a cutoff that they won't go below a hundred bucks. We could say, okay, it's gotta be at least a thousand bucks of what we, what they owe us, or we're not gonna, we're not gonna give it to the Attorney General, correct? Okay. And what would be your intention to go back to the Attorney General?
I'd like to do that.
I, I, I'm also fine with that, or Hanam, I guess the question is, do we need to do that? Um, can we, can we do the ord, this ordinance prior to that, establish an amount?
I would like to see the, I would like to see the distribution of what people owe us. All right, hold on. The fifty-seven, yeah, no problem with fifty-seven, I don't think. It's the, I don't know how many, how many people are we talking? Yeah. Right.
Five hundred total dollars. How many people are in that one, that? That kind of?
Right. But I think it's important to also include to the extent we can, how much is the actual tax owed, how much is interest penalty? So in other words, if, with a thousand dollars in tax, plus two hundred dollars in interest and, oh, five hundred dollars, you know, cause I don't know what those, what those structures financially might be. Why don't we, why don't we try to set a finance committee meeting if you're okay with that, Mr. Mayor?
I think we need a motion first to refer this to the Finance Committee.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to re, to, uh, refer ordinance number seventy-four, two thousand and nineteen to the Finance Committee for further consideration.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Uh, Mr. Schreier, just out of timing perspective, the next council meeting is the twentieth? Or the twenty-first, excuse me, cause that twentieth is President's Day if I recall.
Correct.
Um, is that sufficient amount of time for your, uh, department to put together some waterfall? Okay. Um, so I, I would suggest six-thirty on, on the twenty-first, prior to the council meeting?
Yep.
Okay, I'll make a motion to set a, uh, a Finance Committee meeting at six-thirty PM on, uh, February the twenty-first, prior to our council meeting.
Second.
All right. Twenty-first is, uh, holiday, right?
That's President's Day.
Yeah.
Right? Um, and moved and seconded to refer ordinance seventy-four, two thousand and nineteen to the Finance Committee for further, further consideration on Tuesday, February twenty-first at six-thirty PM in these council chambers, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, the clerk is ordered to postpone that meeting. Thank you for the discussion.
We're now on to agenda item sixteen, which is proposed Resolution two, two thousand and twenty-three, establishing the Downtown Decorations Advisory Board and repealing previous, uh, resolution number fifteen, two thousand and nine. Brining?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, Mr. Sanford, maybe though, feel free to chime in anytime, but, um, I'll, I'll do my best. This was, um, a result, the Downtown Decorations Advisory Board was first established when we had the banners on, installed on the light poles in the downtown, um, and since then, there's been a lot of transition and changes in different organizations that have been formed, um, so that was, but that program had kind of, I think everybody likes it, so everybody wanted, wanted to be involved in it, so, um, Mr. Sanford's been meeting with the Arts Commission, I believe, and I believe every, the chamber, the DSA, they've all kind of had, um, had their chance to, to say what they, they wanted to be involved, um, and to put somebody in charge of the overall, um, downtown, the banners, and that's going to be under the DSA, is going to take charge of the program. And then the members of the Advisory Board will be the President of the Chamber, the President of the Arts Commission, one member of the mayor's administrative staff to be appointed by the mayor, and the President of the DSA, and the Executive Director of Heritage Slovenia, so those groups have agreed to, um, be in charge and run the program and, um, get that, get those banners back on track.
Mr. Sanford, you've reported back to me that you've not only had good meetings, but banner meetings about this subject. Anything more you'd like to say?
Um, I think, uh, pretty well that property public piece finds all's under
Mrs. Westfall, there's been a near committee comment?
I do have a question that I'm not clear on, um, currently those banners come before us for, for an approval, will that still be happening? Or will the, this group have that final approval process?
The group, the group. They just bring it here.
I, I was only impressed, this was a different entity.
Oh, you're talking about the short banners?
Yes, yeah, 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 the overhead banners will still come to you, yep, these are the light pole.
Okay, okay, okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Just FYI, if I may, Mayor, I didn't even know this city existed, and I was supposedly on this committee as, as president council, so I am perfectly fine with delegating this responsibility to those who are focused on it.
I have been carrying around Resolution fifteen, two thousand and nine for at least a year, knowing that we had to update it. And I'm glad to see there's movement ahead, I'm sure that uh, Mr. Sanford, who will be my appointee to that group, will bring those banners back to the administration so we can take a look at them. Um, I'm not clear about Mrs. Westfall's question, whether the city council has to approve them or not. I don't believe so, I don't think we've done that in the past.
I, I do have to say, Mr. Mayor, I was confused, the over the street banner versus the side banner, so you're, we have not approved those side banners.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But we'd like to move ahead with our new banner, our new Downtown Decorations Advisory Board, it's not a banner, downtown decoration. This Resolution two, two thousand and twenty-three, Mrs. Westfall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce Resolution number two dash two thousand and twenty-three, all members of council having received in advance, I'll read by title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Slovenia establishing the Downtown Decorations Advisory Board, repealing Resolution number fifteen dash two thousand and nine. I move final passage of Resolution number two dash two thousand and twenty-three as a final, uh, as a, an emergen, emergency measure.
Second.
We moved and seconded for passage of Resolution number two, two thousand and twenty-three as an emergency measure, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries of Resolution two, two thousand and twenty-three is enacted as an emergency measure, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hanam.
Yeah, thank you for recognizing me, uh, Toby, um, I failed to raise this question with you about Exhibit C to the delinquent debt collection agreement, whether, I, I just wonder whether that's complete or not, we can talk about that in Finance Committee, but there are a bunch of boxes there, none of which are checked, and I don't know whether that's intentional or not, okay? Thank you. I didn't want to surprise you. All right, we're now moving on to agenda item seventeen, um, City of Slovenia has an audit committee that reviews our city audits, our annual audits, and they are appointed, uh, members from our citizenry. And as a new appointee to this group, I have appointed John And as a new appointee to this group, I have appointed John Monahan. Um, John Monahan is very active in the community. He has been the treasurer of the Slovenia Area Community Improvement Corporation for a number of years, and is a CPA, I think is a very appropriate member of our audit review committee. They take a look at it as does city council. This is not in any way circumventing you. It's not a new group. It's just reinforcing that group with a very qualified member. So I ask for your confirmation of my appointment of John Monahan. Mr. Frye.
Uh, I'll make a motion to, uh, confirm the appointment of John Monahan to the audit committee of the City of Slovenia.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to confirm the mayor's appointment of John Monahan to the audit committee. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. We're up to agenda item eighteen. We have an added agenda item eighteen. A, to schedule a meeting of the Employee and Community Relations Committee. Thank you for attending, Chief. Mrs. Westfall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I would like to schedule an Employee and Community Relations Committee meeting for the reason, um, and purpose of reviewing the community board appointment ordinance. Um, there's, that's something we made a commitment to do when we made our sage art appointment. So just to follow through on that. There's no sense of urgency on that. Um, now know that February twenty-first is taken. Don't want to come in earlier than six-thirty, but perhaps March sixth, before that, March sixth, have a, a meeting. I'm maybe six forty-five, seven o'clock. I don't think it will be a long meeting. And I will send out the current ordinance in advance so that you've had a chance to look at it. So how does that look for the members of the Employee? There are Patrick, Marcus, and I have it wrong. Oh, Doug. Marcus, Doug, and Patrick. So does that March sixth date work for the city council meeting at six forty-five? That's.
It, it works for me. That work?
Works for me too, so.
All right, how about if we looked, um, Monday, March? That better? That work for Doug?
Yeah, it's before baseball season.
Okay.
It is the first day of spring, however.
It is.
Six forty-five?
Six forty-five. So I'll make a motion that the Employee and Community Relations Committee meet on Monday, March twentieth at six forty-five. I'm here in the council chambers to review the community board ordinance and any other business to come before that committee.
Second.
Moved and seconded to set a meeting of the Employee and Community Relations Committee for Monday, March twentieth, at six forty-five in council chambers. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries and the clerk is directed to post that meeting.
Thank you.
Are there any additional committee reports or committee referrals to make at this time? Hearing none. Um, you have a funds report for two thousand and twenty-two from Chief Miller, and also a fourth quarter management report from the Division of Vehicle Maintenance to add to the ones that were received at the previous meeting. There's no further business or questions. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No moves.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and this council stands adjourned until its next meeting, like regularly scheduled meeting, two weeks and a day from tonight, on Tuesday, February twenty-first, at seven thirty PM. Thank you all for attending.